Board meeting, I apologize for the delay in getting started. We were in executive session and it ran a little bit long. So as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast at a later date by Canton Community Television. All right, so first item on the agenda is our public comment. So as I do each meeting, I will read this statement regarding public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedback and concerns. But the public comment portion of the meeting is not meant to be a question and answer format. There will be no response to any public comment when presented. Public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and up to three minutes per speaker. Those that wish to speak should have their first and last name displayed. We will not call on participants with incomplete or inappropriate names. Anyone who does not wish to speak or who is unable to speak due to the time limit may submit their comments in writing for the board's review and consideration. So with that being said, let us start public comments at seven eleven. And I see three hands up, so Rachel, if you could just change your your display name so that it's a first and last name. And while we're waiting for that, we will go to Ms. Sweeney.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Brenda Sweeney, my humble opinion, time for a conversation about Chief Helena Rafferty, this, this select board and the town. Helena's department was woefully unprepared to manage a crime scene, nor did they have the updated equipment, software, and training necessary to manage modern day policing to ensure the safety of the town they were supposed to be protecting. Her leadership made Canton the butt of jokes around the world. Her remedy, she has consistently weaponized the law to try and control the narrative, and now the whole world is quacking at us. Members of the select board, AKA the police commissioners, your job is oversight of the police. Did you do that job? Did you hold her responsible for that total incompetence? Did you stop her and her commissioner buddy, one of your own ranks, I might add, from weaponizing the law? From letting down the officers with integrity that still have to work in that department? Did you come up with a plan for all those civil rights lawsuits heading our way? Did you do anything to rectify this disaster so the town's a safer place? Or is your real priority making sure your well-oiled machine just keeps running? We've repeatedly heard Mr. Lockren say he doesn't tell the police how to do their job while Mr. Conley sits there quietly nodding his head in agreement. Well, based on our front row seat to both Helena's poor performance and the pitiful display of oversight we'd witnessed, I'd say it's time for the citizens to tell you what we think of your performance, Mr. Conley. At the February 12 Finance Committee meeting, Helena stated she wants another three-year contract, but she knows it depends on the outcome of the election. I hope everybody's listening, she gets another three years if John Conley gets in. Who cares about job performance, about safety, about the citizens? Obviously not some members of this board. So it's time, people, if you want to end the fear and intimidation that's ruled this town with an iron fist for years, it's time to use your power at the voting booth to take back your town. Many people in town can't stand up and speak out because those bullies have no qualms about using your children, your jobs, and your safety to strike fear in your hearts. But now it's time, those of us speaking out can't do this part alone. It's your turn to step up to the plate. You need to decide what future you want to carve out for your children and Garen children. This is your opportunity to change the direction of the town. Say no to bullying, say no to fear, say no to intimidation. Do that by saying no to John Conley and Helena Rafferty. If you're silent at the polls, your children will have no hope for a different future. The balls in your court citizens, stand up, spread the word, go to the polls, and change the narrative. Take your town and your children's future back by voting no to John and Helena and voting yes to Susan Harrington in April. There's a saying, if you leave your children a world where you never stood up, they'll inherit a world where they can't. It's time, stand up and go to the polls. One last thing, it's time to start the search for a new chief. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to Greg Dodd next. Greg, give us just a second and then Rachel, just a reminder, I need a last name, so if you can just click on edit your profile, you should be able to change your display name. Greg, you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Greg Dodd, Lincolnshire Drive, Chair of the Canton Democratic Town Committee. As Chair of the Canton Democratic Town Committee, I want to remind all Canton voters of the significance of local elections and remind the community of upcoming election and encourage all residents to vote and have their voices heard. As it stands now, not many people in Canton are even aware of the April 8th town election. Typically in Canton, election turnout in April is poor. About 20% of residents vote in local elections compared to the 60% to 80% in November. Canton has no central signage to remind its voters of the upcoming election day. Our neighbors in Sharon regularly inform their voters with a high-hanging street banners for all to see. So why not Canton? Moreover, the Canton Democratic Town Committee supports and requests a wide range of efforts to encourage civic engagement and increase voter turnout and remind voters that they have a say in the future of Canton. Many voters choose to vote by mail and ballot, however, it's not well-known or publicized that mail-in ballots must be requested or either through, through the online mail-in ballot application system on the website of the Secretary of State or through the paper application available at the town clerk's office and found on the town website as well. We understand that the town administrator, we understand from the town administrator that the clerk's office is responsible for signage throughout the town. We propose a banner or signs that would read, for example, vote April 8th Canton Town Election to be promoted, to be prominently displayed in multiple visible locations. According to research that we did with the town of Sharon, a banner can be made so that only the date is altered. Therefore, one-time investment in a banner would yield, would yield many years of use. We ask from, we ask for your support and consideration of this matter by our select board and town clerk. It's a small but powerful tool to help remind voters of the April 8th election. Also, I just want to add that the Canton Democratic Town Committee is welcoming all new members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Next, we will go to Ms. Lombardi.
Rita Lombardi, I just want to say bravo to Brenda Sweeney and Mr. Dodd for excellent statements. And I applaud everything and I agree with Mr. Dodd. This town does not do enough, as a matter of fact, doesn't do anything to remind its citizens of the April 8th election. I am asking all Canton voters, put a reminder on your phones now to remember to vote in the April election, April 8th. Vote for Susan Harrington. It's time to change this town and change the direction of this town. And I agree, we need signs up to remind the voters. We have a 911 emergency system, reverse 911. Why can't we send out notices to people? We send out notices when there's troubles with the cable, we send out notices when there's troubles with the streets or whatever. Why can't we send out notices via the nine, reverse 911 to let the residents know it's time to vote? We need all residents to stand up, use your voice, this is your time. Use your voice and vote John Conley out of office. Thirty-five years we've had enough, we have watched the select board refuse to do their responsibility and oversee the police force. For 35 years we've done that, we did not know it until you told us that you don't do the select board. Please, people, get out, mark your calendars, April 8th, vote Susan Harrington. Go to her website, HarringtonFORCanton, HarringtonFORCanton.com. Please go to that website, learn everything you can about Susan. Look at the young jerks, they have videos of her, and I'm sure Susan's website is going to have them as well. She is phenomenal, Susan Harrington is what Canton needs. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Lombardi. And Rachel, I still don't see a name change there, so unfortunately, we're not going to be able to call on you. Please feel free to email the select board with any comments or concerns. We will absolutely take those under advisement. All right, moving on to the agenda, Mr. Albert, first up.
Okay, first up on the agenda for tonight is going to be the water and store rates study, continued discussion from last time. Mr. Randy Scollins from the Finance Department is here to give us an update.
All right, so while Randy is getting ready. As the board knows, this was presented to the select board. The water commissioners had met and presented the issue that residents that are renting apartments in Canton do not have individual meters on their apartments. And so as a result, they could be paying kind of like an aggregate amount of what everybody in the apartment building is using. And that's kind of like divided up evenly rather than, you know, a family of four paying more than a single person living in an apartment. So the problem that I had with the proposal that was presented to us is the majority of apartments in Canton are heat and hot water included. Apartments on Balliva Street, on Sherman Street, on 138, the heat and hot water is included. So my fear is that we make a change and it doesn't impact the renters. It benefits the landlords, we're putting money into their pockets, and there's no guarantee that that money that they're saving is going to trickle down to the renters. The other problem that I had with that is that you're asking the rest of the town, those that have an irrigation system, to kind of like bear the burden of trying to resolve this rental water meter issue. As the board is well aware and as the public is well aware, we just increased water rates by over 20% to our residents, and this I think is a tall ask to say that those that have an irrigation system, your rent, your rates are going to increase as well. So I think that as one member, I certainly support the idea of trying to resolve this problem. I just don't think that the solution that was presented to this board is the appropriate solution. And I'd like to see them go back and try to come up with something else. Trish?
Yeah, thanks Chair. Two questions, I think, well, and one statement, one Windsor Woods, when I was there door knocking a year ago, an elderly lady had said that she was getting gaffed with water. So it's not included, I know, at Windsor Woods, like she specifically came out to me and I I said, I'll talk with someone in the town hall. So I guess my next question through you Chair is to Randy, is there a solution for, you know, I'm going to guess low-income individuals who are living in apartments to not get gaffed by the water bills?
Through the Chair, I don't believe we have a of water abatement or exemption process that's reserved for, you know, property taxes. And I believe the select board has delegated the responsibility to address perceived water billing issues. You know, to have the town administrator handle those, but I don't believe we have a, have an abatement or exemption program for, for water sewer, and I will note that it's a zero-sum game. So whatever revenues we take out of the system would need to be replaced somehow in order to support the enterprise funds. All right. Any other questions for Randy before we you know, kind of direct him to go back to the drawing board? Trish, do you still, okay, you still?
I'll speak with him offline. But yeah, you're, you are, Randy, you're awesome, but your, your counting is so far over my head compared to, you know, what I talk about my balance sheet and income statement. So you're, yeah, you can explain to me at a later date about the enterprise funds, I'll set up an appointment with you.
So the Finance Director also sent the, the Select Board a letter talking about a lot of moving pieces related to stormwater, water and sewer, and how that could add confusion regarding these water sewer bills. The consultant that they used had given a fairly vague percentage of what the increase could be. And I think that it's only fair that we try to tighten that up so that we have a better idea of if we approve something of what the impact is going to be. So I would like to give the guidance to Randy to go back and see if they can't look at this in a different light.
I would appreciate that opportunity, Mr. Chair. Many factors converging on the, what was originally suggested implementation date of July 1st. As you pointed out, we've got potentially a stormwater fee being implemented, we already have 5% rate increases being implemented, and then there's a regrouping of how all the water meters are read and changing the groups. So it's going to take three cycles in order to get through to a normalized bill. Because some, some customers' bill cycles will be cut short, be elongated, trued up in the next read, and then finally normalized in the third read after that. So it's a lot of moving parts, and so to add this on top of it, especially given that it's, it does indeed require some more thought. And we'd like to go through a more detailed validation, so I look forward to going back to the drawing board on this one.
Okay. All right, everybody on the board, okay with, with that direction?
Yeah, one more question, like I could, to Randy. Randy, if, do you have any idea how many rental units that have the one metering source instead of individuals? Do you know how many units or developments have those?
That's a great question, JR, and these are some of the points that had not been determined for us with the consultants, so this, that's the type of data element that we want to be sure that we have a firm handle on before making another recommendation here. We need to understand that because that's going to speak to directly what the Chair said, you know, whether or not a rate change would feed back directly to the, to the apartment dweller or not. So that's an important consideration we need to get the answers to.
Yeah, that answer is the biggest answer is how would we ensure that any savings in the water bill would be brought down to the renters? Without that, without that, we're hitting a ping pong against the wall. So that is a big, big issue with those renters, and I think we really got to look at that. Because they're not going to see the savings, I'm with Chair on that, I don't think they'll see the savings.
So to piggyback that, on that, Mr. McCord, it's, you know, if there are 5,000 renters in Canton and this is impacting 200, it's a lot to ask the rest of the town to bear that burden. Especially those that just got a recent gas bill.
Oh yeah, that's definitely, but just in the past year or so, just talking about the price of rent and affordable housing, the rents are going sky-high, so somebody's making money here. And it's going to the residents of these apartment buildings and there's some sort of structure to help them on this, it's just, it's tough. But thank you, appreciate the answer, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. McCord.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scollins. All right, next, Mr. Albert.
Next up, we have an update for property at 1860 Washington Street. TJ Torres is here to give us an update on it.
Fabulous town planner. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, happy to be here tonight with an exciting update. I know a lot of people in town are wondering what we're doing with St. Gerard's. So if you allow me to share my screen, I have a presentation to share on what we're doing currently.
Yep.
Yep, 1860 Washington Street, the former St. Gerard's church site. Two seconds, sorry. So what's going on with St. Gerard's? Just, I know members of the board are probably familiar, but some context for folks listening at home. The town purchased the former parish property from the Archdiocese of Boston in 2021. It includes a 37,000 square foot church, 4,000 square foot residence, and it's both on, both of them are on a nine-acre lot. Then there was a committee appointed in 2023, they collected a lot of public feedback and had a report on the potential reuse ideas, and the leading ideas that came out of this report were, number one, by and far was a community center. Following that was recreation slash open space, education, and municipal use. And we want to stress that we are using that feedback as the foundation to drive this next phase of study. So we're building off of that, and that's, you know, a, a big part of the steering here. We then received a state grant for $40,000 to perform the reuse study. And the study came in a little under that budget, so it is fully funded by the grant. We contracted recently with an architecture firm in a Boston called UTO for the reuse study. They did a very similar project on Westport, former Westport High School. The study will be complete by August of 2025, so we're at the beginning right now. The current uses of the property, the Canton Food Pantry moved into the lower level of the church, they're using about half of the lower level. And they're very happy with the space, big improvement from where they were before. It's also a polling location upstairs in the church for two precincts, and the clerk's office is very happy with being able to use that space for those two precincts. And a lot of municipal document storage has been moved over to the, also the lower level of the church to help clear up space and town offices. And here's some pictures of the former church, you can see the outside. And this is the upper level where the precincts are, you enter from the door in the front. And then the former rectory or residence. So what is this study all about? Just a reminder, it's, it's a big picture study, it's, it's not just about former St. Gerard's, it's about the town as a whole and how adding this into our real estate portfolio will affect how we can deliver town programs and services in the future. So the first thing we do is evaluate the condition of the existing buildings. We had one of their architects on site last week to evaluate the buildings. They also went around to existing municipal offices at Town Hall, Pequot Side, at Hemman Way, and the Senior Center. And they took note of the office space that we're currently using, had informal conversations and got feedback from a lot of department managers on, on their, the current space and their needs. There's also going to be a formal mechanism to collect that feedback as well and catalog it as part of the study. And then at the end, they'll produce three different test fit scenarios with renderings. So we can see some pretty pictures and get a visualization and some rough cost estimates. And just to point out, all scenarios are for municipal uses, there are no private uses such as housing being considered. If that were the case, the town wouldn't have bought it, so just to remind everyone, this is for the municipal use. The working group that we have for the study, it consists of the town administrator, assistant town administrator, building commissioner provides a great perspective on something like this. We have the department directors for Elder and Human Services, Veterans, and Parks and Recreation, because their departments are potentially the most affected by some of these scenarios, as we'll see. And then Brian and Steve from our Facilities Department. Remember, this is big picture, this is long-range planning, it's not just about the town today and how we use our space and how we deliver services. It's thinking down the line, the next 10, 20, 50 years, you know. I'm a planner, my brain always works like that, but I have to remind everyone that, who doesn't, that it's, you know, it's not just about what we're using it for right now. It's, we really want to get this right as we plan how to work it in for the future. So we, you know, take the 10,000-foot view and vision. How can, the question is, how can we configure the town departments, programs, and services to be most effective for the residents of the town and the public? So we're going to see three conceptual scenarios as part of the study, I'll go over them briefly tonight. When you see these, they're definitely going to elicit a lot of opinions right off the bat, but just remember it's conceptual and we want to explore all ends of the spectrum. On one end, the scenario one we're asking for is real, short-term, short money. What can we do, you know, right now for a low cost to start using those, that area more? The scenario two would be a little The scenario two would be a little further out, medium term, probably require some financing, a little higher cost, but be able to alleviate more problems as part of that design. And then scenario three is the real, long term, high cost. How do you, you know, really design it and get everything you want? Obviously, longer, higher cost as you go across the spectrum and probably a longer period to attain it. And another good point is that the study is focused on the interior space. And outdoor recreation elements can be a part of any of these designs. So we don't want you to think we've forgotten about them. It's just we're focusing on the interior and a lot of the recreation can follow because it is such a great site. So we'll get into the scenarios. Scenario one, what happens if we keep the existing buildings and we use the footprints as they are? Establish, and this is what the architects are going to flush out for us. So this scenario would entail establishing a community center space, relocating the senior center and the offices that go with the Department of Elder and Human Services, the Veterans Department, and possibly the Board of Health, depending on space. Overflow town office space and storage. We are busting at the seams at Town Hall. So, you know, if new employees or extra part time employees come on, where do we put them? Just to have some extra office space. And retain the food pantry space as it is. Scenario two is, okay, what if you built a new building on the site? May include demolishing the current ones, may not, depending on how the architects come up with it. And what if you put the community center and the senior center into that new building? And what we've heard from other towns is that they have to be separated or else it doesn't work very well, having the youth and the seniors in their own spaces. It's the advice we've gotten, so that the design would consider that. And relocating DEHS, Veterans, Board of Health, and the food pantry into that space with also overflow town office space and storage. Now, scenario three, again, the opposite end of the spectrum. What if you had a clean slate and knocked everything down and constructed a new municipal complex that would bring almost everybody under one roof? Include community center, your senior center, and most town departments in one place. What would that look like? Obviously, that would be a long term, big picture project, high cost, and we'd have to consider what to do with any current town buildings that would be vacated in that scenario. So with this, with this study, we'll get to run the gamut of those three different scenarios. And maybe there'll be one in between that the architects come up with that we didn't think of. And we'll really get to get some visuals on what that would look like, what implications it would have, and what the cost might be. And then the town can decide what direction to pursue, if any. So thank you for allowing me to give an update on, which I think is a very exciting project. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. But remember, it's the beginning stage of the study, so we don't know what it's going to say, but this is how it's going to be laid out.
All right. Thank you, TJ. Do we have any questions for our town planner? A little bit shocking, but I'll take it. John, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to TJ and anyone else, that I've got a lot of calls from people, retired people, people living on fixed incomes. We just passed the $241 million school minus the $73 million was pledged by the state. So this isn't going to happen overnight. It's going to be the long range planning, as TJ, our town planner, has said. So I'll make, put everybody at ease in saying, you know, this isn't going to start, bulldozers aren't going there this spring, start tearing things up. Maybe, maybe in a short term in a number one situation, but not a number two or number three in my, that's what I'm, that's what my opinion is. Because times are tough right now. I'm in the construction business and the construction is very, very down. So we have to be very careful. We have to, we passed the school, 70% of the people in this town supported the new school. We have to get that done and get that going because we, thanks to Randy and triple bond day rating, we were able to do that. So that's just my concern. That's what makes that perfectly clear and loud, that we have to walk before we run.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Any other comments, concerns, questions for our town planner? Trish?
Yeah, just one quick one, Chair. So keeping in mind what you said, it's a long road ahead of us. How long exactly do you suppose, is this in three, four, five years before anything starts to happen there?
It's really too early to tell, especially when we don't know what the cost figures are. I know, working with the town administrator on this, he would definitely like to see, regardless of what direction we choose, how can we at least start using those buildings better in the short term, even if we can't act on some of the longer term plans? As Mr. Conley said, this is long range. It's absolutely long range, especially with the school coming up. But how could we maybe start using the rectory to put in some overflow town offices? So even regardless of what plan we choose in the long term, there's definitely an eye towards figuring out what kind of temporary uses we could get in there in the short term as well. But it's impossible to put a number on it right now.
Okay.
So, but August, we'll have a better idea of that.
Yeah, it'll be complete in August, yeah.
The study comes in. All right, TJ, we appreciate that. And before I let you go, I wanted to inform the public of a little bit of sad news for the town of Canton. Our town planner is making a career change based on his family and is leaving the town of Canton. And this will probably be our last meeting with him. So before he leaves, I just wanted to say what a pleasure it was to work with you. We serve on the Affordable Housing Trust together. You're my vice chair and bailed me out a time or two. It truly has been a pleasure working with you, TJ. You have such a passion for this. It is a tremendous loss for the town of Canton to see you go. But you're making a decision based on your family, and that's always the right decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the kind words. It's, I've had nothing but a positive experience working here these last two years. And thank you to members of the board for, you know, always your support in the wide range of projects we have and planning the future. And like you said, it's a situation that works out better for my family in a different town. But I appreciate everything here and I hope maybe someday our paths will cross again. So thank you all.
That'd be great.
Good luck, TJ.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck, TJ.
Thank you very much. Keep in touch.
All right. Now, on the lighter side, let's talk budgets.
Oh, gosh. All right. So first up, I believe is a treasurer, tax collector, Sue DeShannon, is she here?
Yes.
Yep. Yes. Hello, Sue.
Chair.
Yep.
Chair, if I could, the assistant treasurer collector, Sue DeShannon, reports into the finance director. So I just wanted to say a few brief words to give some context to the ask here, which is an increase from 35 to 40 hours at a cost of $12,600 in FY '26. This is a combination of a succession planning item as well as increased responsibilities in the treasure collector office. So the succession planning is, is that when I do retire, whenever that day comes, I'm going to recommend to the board that the assistant treasurer collector be elevated to the treasure collector position, which is something I hold as the finance director. But it's an odd combination. Typical combination that you see across the state is finance director, town accountant. And I would strongly recommend that that be the way that the town goes when that day comes. And Sue's, as of this June, she'll have been with us for 20 years and has more than proved herself more than capable. But so this is to give her the hours to be able to come up to speed on other things that I'm doing as treasure collector. But now I'm going to turn it over to Sue to speak to the additional responsibilities that have come to that office that are taking more time.
Thank you. Good evening. We have had a few significant undertakings in the past couple of months here. First, Rockland Trust, which is our vendor and payroll operating accounts, the bank we use for them. They had a retirement in their reconciliation department and they are not backfilling it. They are now starting to push the reconciliation to the cities and towns, not just Canton, all of them. And we took on some of the monthly reconciliation just starting this past month. It does give the cities and towns more control, more access, better flexibility. We can do the recon weekly or even daily if we wanted to rather than monthly. So we can find things that are off, or if there's a problem, we can catch it quicker. It also comes along with a positive pay function, which is, that's a daily task now that they, any checks that are presented for payment that might have a mismatched payee name, amount, check numbers incorrect, we have to give confirmation to pay those checks. Or we can deny it if we see something that's off. So that's something that we're doing daily now. And another big task that we just took on recently was the tax billing process, which for a very long time now has been with our IT director primarily. He did the bulk of the billing process. It has now been put back into the respective departments where it belongs, assessing tax and accounting. So we have just moved that over to our office as well. And that is, it's a big responsibility. We have a lot of deadlines. We have target dates. We cannot miss these dates when it comes to the actual billing. If we are late after December 31st getting them out, we cannot have a Q3 bill. We have to collect everything in May. So it puts a cash flow strain on us as well. So those are a couple of the bigger tasks that we have just been taking on over the past couple of months.
Right. Any questions for Mr. DeShannon regarding that? Is that all you have, Sue?
That is, yep, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Sue.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I would also add, all $180 million that the town receives from anywhere and everywhere goes through that office. So that office is responsible for processing close to $200 million a year in receipts and making sure it all gets accounted for, collected, and credited to the right places. A big responsibility.
Randy, if you're handing out accolades, Sue is a two-time softball coach league champ as well.
No surprise. Probably has a good handicap, too.
All right. If nothing else.
I just want a quick question. I just want to throw an accolade towards Sue. Sue does a wonderful job for us. I get a lot of compliments on her and her professionalism and her compassion. So thank you, Sue, for what you do and who you are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue is the best.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go on to the next, Ms. Mead.
Well, actually, it's me, Schattenfeld.
We'll take that. That's all right.
Okay. I'm the chair of the Board of Trustees, but Peg is my wingwoman. So most questions will go to her. I'm here tonight because our director, Andrea Capone, is on medical leave. Hopefully, she'll be back soon because I can't say I'm particularly enjoying doing her job. It's been quite the challenge. But, and it's made me really appreciate what a good job she's been doing. So tonight, do you all have a sheet that we handed out to you? Would it be possible to put it on the screen so everyone can see it?
Yep. So, Joan, are you able to share your screen?
No, and I don't have it up. So Peg, do you have it?
Yeah, I can, I can pull it up.
That's why you have a wingwoman.
So just give me one sec and I will get that up for you. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Wasn't, I think it was in the packet that you received, I believe.
Yeah, it's just when I start reading numbers, your eyes are going to start glazing.
Yep. There we go. Can you see that? Okay.
Okay, can, hopefully you can actually see it.
I can.
Yep.
So we have several increased requests. And number one, as you can see, is the new position for an assistant library director. The library is one of the only municipal departments without an assistant director. And Director Capone oversees 23 direct reports, which is more than most municipal departments. And the library receives nearly, and received nearly 200,000 visits in 2024. It is really the most used building in Canton, other than the schools. And her most recent medical leave really demonstrated the need for an assistant director. So that is our major ask this time around. The rest are rightsizing the budget. Number two is the increase in page hours. Our pages are critical for keeping the books on the shelves so that they're available for all the citizens despite vacations and sick days that can cause staff shortages. And the library had 178,453 books and 99,047 eBooks that circulated in 2024. And our pages are the ones that actually get those books on the shelf, so you can take them out. As I said, it's to increase is to rightsize the budget. As you can see, in 2023, the actual was 46,417. 2024, it was 49,863. In 2025, suddenly we have 34,913. And 2025 through 11/27, 24,514. So we need an additional 15,100 to rightsize that. The other thing that we are requesting are our material increases. We are becoming the most, we are the most popular place in town. And we spend $13,000 in digital information. I'm sorry, the increases. And our eBooks, 12,000. Our books and periodicals, 3,700. And it has increased steadily over the past years. And the town must provide money for these materials in order for the library to qualify for state aid and remain accredited. If we don't have a certain amount of materials, we get a decrease in state aid and our accreditation is in danger. The other, number four is the night differential. This is also to rightsize the budget number. The actual use in 2024 was 8,640, and in 2023 was 8,006. The library is open between 1,514 and 1,700 hours in the evening. The other, our last request is for our network fee, which you might know as OCLN. This is a contractual amount for Canton to be part of the old Colony Library Network. It allows interlibrary borrowing. So if you put any books on hold, it can come from any library that is in this network. It isn't just coming from the Canton Library. And it also maintains our online website for OCLN, which patrons use to reserve books, audio, eBooks, and physical books. And those are our requests.
All right. Thank you, Joan and Peg. Do we have any questions for our library trustees? Yep, Mr. McCord?
Joan, how many pages are employed at the library with all that work? You know?
I had it on a separate sheet. Peg, do you have it?
Yep, hold on.
Funny, because I know them all.
Library pages, one, two, six.
Six. Very good. No, I've been at the library every Tuesday and usually twice a week now in the last couple of years. And I see them working all the time. So they do a good job. So thank you for them.
I would like to just add one thing when we're talking about the position of assistant library director. Right now, we are, we have a citizen population of 24,000, about 457. Once we hit 25,000, and that's not based on the every 10 year census, it's based on the tax rolls. Once we hit 25,000, we have to add four additional hours that we are open. And that's a part of, of the Mass Board of Library Commissioners rules and would affect our state accreditation if we don't do that. So we're So we're, in the next year or two, we are going to have to add an additional four hours. And through, um, surveys, focus groups, uh, talking to patrons, we know that the hours they want to have the library open is on Sunday. There are a lot of families, uh, where the parents are working and the only time they can bring the kids to the library is on the weekend. And currently we are not open on Sundays. Um, several of the libraries in our network are open on Sundays, including Randolph. Uh, and this is something we really need to add within the next year or two. Having the assistant library director position will allow us to do that. Right now, we're open six days a week. Um, but we know that we need to be open seven days a week within the next couple of years. And that will require another managerial position, um, so we have constant coverage in the library.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I don't see any other questions, so, uh, thank you very much for presenting.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, who's next, Mr. Albert?
So next up is, uh, the building department. Mr. Ed Walsh is here.
There he is. How are you, sir?
Good. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, just going back to the accolades that Sue Dejardin, um, you omitted one person and that was a great town employee and probably my best teacher was her mother, Jean Finnegan. Uh, she ran the building department for over 20 years, too. So, uh, she came from good stock.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm happy for you tonight to request, um, a 25-hour position for a local inspector. I applied for this position last year. It kind of ended up on the, uh, on the editing floor, but that's part of life. Um, so it's going to cost the town a little over 48,000 per year, plus the additional $500 per year for the required continuous ed. Um, currently we're operating, in 2003, we're offering 59 hours of building inspection hours per week. We're currently offering 53 hours per week, a 10% less what we did back in '03. Yet our permits are up 70% since '03. Um, we're doing over 1,350 permits per year. Whereas back in '03, we're only doing 18, uh, 800. We've tried to get a part-time building inspector nine years ago, was not benefits eligible at 15 hours per week. We had two applicants and it wasn't worth pursuing, um, that avenue at the time. It wasn't in the best interest of the town. Um, when we compare ourselves to other towns through the human resource department, we use 11 other towns. And of those 11 other towns, only four of them have a part-time local inspector. All the others have either multiple local inspectors or a full-time local inspector. Sharon, Stoughton and Randolph are the only towns that have part-time inspectors. We currently have one part-time inspector at 13 hours per, per week, which is the way we've been going since '03. Uh, we've been very fortunate with having Paul McCarthy as the local inspector. Um, he's been great. He had, was full-time for years in Quincy. He's retired now. Um, but I think if he leaves, I don't know how lucky we're going to be able to fill that part-time position if it's not benefits eligible. Ideally, what I'd like to do in the future is when, uh, Paul retires and if we get this, uh, 25-hour position, we can merge it into one full-time assistance position. Um, I think that's in the best interest of the town. It would try and provide some continuity to the town, so you'd have only two inspectors versus possibly three. Um, and, you know, similar to the library is if I go out for a while, which almost happened once, but not too long. You know, what's our plan B? And that's, you know, it's, that's what it's about, is keeping the town going. So, you know, that's my request. Any questions? And, you know, wherever it falls, that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Um, so I have, uh, two questions. So, um, I, I think you, uh, answered the first one, but I just want to clarify. So, uh, I'm a big fan of succession planning and not that you're going anywhere anytime soon. But do you, you, uh, am I correct that you envision that this person could, uh, possibly be, you know, if we fill this and then when Mr. McCarthy steps down, um, that this person could step into your role when you retire?
Ideally, that'd be, you know, the optimum plan. I mean, I, I followed Chris Lasky into this position, you know, uh, back in '03 also, so it worked out well. Um, but that would be the ultimate goal is to make for a smoother transition for the town down the road.
Okay. And the, the other question I have, and I'm not suggesting that we even go down this route, but I'm, I'm just curious. Um, are there regional building inspectors? Like, we had this conversation with the veteran service officer, uh, because there are towns that kind of like share those services. Um, are there towns around that kind of like share inspectors? Uh, or is it really important to have that, that local knowledge, you know, dealing with the builders and, um, things like that?
Well, right now, right now, what, there is, you know, some guys do work in multiple towns.
Okay.
It's not per se a regional inspector. But so if we could fill this 25-hour position, hopefully this would be his primary job and he could get his benefits here. Then he could do fewer hours in another town.
Okay.
So it would be like his number one town.
Okay. All right. Any, uh, questions for our, uh, Mr. Walsh? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, so who's next, Mr. Albert? Next up is, uh, Recreation and Rink Enterprise, uh, Tyler. I don't know, is he here?
Yep.
You got him? All right, there he is.
Evening, Chair. Select board. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, perfectly.
Wonderful. Um, so I'll give you guys a quick overview. Um, so the big ask for this year is, uh, moving our recreation supervisor position that we, um, started last year, um, from our revolving budget to our operating budget. Um, as you know, our rec revolving budget, um, we utilize that budget to help offset the cost of a lot of our programs to keep them affordable for families as well as cover additional charges for, um, improvement projects, um, kind of emergency field projects that we may run into, um, as, and cover financial aid for families, um, to cover the cost of camps and programs that we run. So, um, by moving this position, it'll help alleviate some of that cost to our revolving budget. Um, and that, that ask is, uh, about $56,842. So, um, that's our big ask for this year. The other additional request is, um, our lifeguard, um, increased, um, by $15,000. Um, that is due to the fact that, one, um, additional hours at the pool, which has been a huge request from the public. Um, we were looking at ways, um, to add additional swim hours for families. Um, and, um, as well as retaining our lifeguards, that's been a huge issue. Uh, nationwide is finding lifeguards. Uh, there's a lot of towns that are still struggling to find lifeguards. Um, we've been very lucky with kind of, um, the things that we've been doing for lifeguards as far as the rate, um, their hourly rate, providing their certifications or reimbursing them for their certifications, that's been huge. Um, and I will say for this coming summer, we have about 90% of our lifeguards coming back. So I think that's, says a lot of what we're doing to retain these lifeguards. Um, and it's such a huge asset for the town to be able to have the, these lifeguards and be open for these additional hours. So that's why the additional ask, um, for the 15,000 to help offset the cost of the certifications and their hourly rates. Um, another, um, $3,000 increase to our overtime salary. That is due to the additional programs in which we've, um, added over the years. Um, our programs are supported a lot, especially on the night times and on the weekends by our maintenance staff. And with that, it, in, uh, increases our overtime costs. And then, um, our cell phone stipend, um, that is just a contractual, um, with the additional staff. The cell phone stipend is a contractual thing. So, um, and then we have an additional $3,000 ask for our software, which is, uh, we use a, a software called MyRec for all of our programs. That number, um, that they charge us is based off the amount of, uh, uh, participants and revenue that we take in. Since the start of 2002, when I started, there was a little over 4,000 participants, um, that we, uh, had. This past year, we hit about 8,500 participants in our programs, and that's not including the free events that we offer. Um, so we've almost, um, you know, we doubled the size of our, our participant rate. We doubled the size of our department, um, which is a, which is a very positive thing. It just comes with additional costs. And then, um, another two, $2,000 increase for chalk and fertilizer, which is due to additional field usage from other youth organizations and adult groups and things like that. Um, so that's the overview, um, for that. And then I will, I will say that we do have a, um, as I was doing the budget, I caught a, uh, um, a double charge for our maintenance salary. So we're actually going to be subtracting $70,000 from our maintenance salary budget, um, which is due to the fact that, uh, four of our full-time maintenance guys move over to the rink. Um, and the salary actually gets pulled from the rink budget, the enterprise budget. So, um, we're able to subtract $70,000 from our maintenance budget. So the total ask is, um, $13,442, um, for, for our operating budget out of that. So I can take questions on that one, or I can just keep going to the other budgets of you.
Um, so, uh, before you move on, Tyler, um, how are you for, um, your staff? So I know you and I have talked about, uh, staffing and, you know, as, uh, awesome as it is that you're so willing to, uh, jump in and help. Um, ideally, we don't want to see you on a, a lawnmower, uh, mowing, but I know that you, uh, you get the job done. So, um, are you staffed up? Everybody's there, or?
Yeah, so right now, um, we're actually down, we're, we're in good shape. We are down, um, one of our maintenance guys due to a medical leave right now. Um, but we are outside of that. Once he does come back, hopefully by the springtime, we will be fully staffed, um, for our maintenance and our programming. So we should be in the spring, um, in good shape. And I have, uh, lucky enough to work with the high schools as well, uh, their externship program that they do.
Yep.
Uh, I did put in a request for maintenance, um, and we actually have one of our, um, summer maintenance kids who wants to do his externship with us in the maintenance department, who will be a huge asset for us in the spring and then carry over in the summer, too. So, um, it's something that he wants to pursue potentially after, um, college and things like that. So it's a good fit. So that helps out as well.
Awesome. Okay. Any other questions, Tyler, uh, on that before he moves on? All right, Tyler, you can move on.
Great. Um, I believe the next budget, I don't know if it's youth services, I believe, which is
Yep.
the, um, Halloween party and the egg hunt, um, that's going to stay where it's at. Um, and those two events have grown. Um, I don't know, I know some of you have been able to attend the past couple of Halloweens and you've seen how, how large it's grown, which is great. Uh, it's such an awesome event. But, um, where we're at, we're able to, um, be able to offset some of those costs and not put it back into the town. So, um, so that's going to stay the way it is. Um, I believe the, the Paul Revere, uh, maintenance budget's going to remain the same as well. Um, and the last one is the enterprise for the rink. Um, just one small ask of, uh, additional, um, $1,600 for the night differential, which is due to the fact that we've added additional staff, full-time staff over there, uh, for safety purposes, and which we've discussed in the past. So, um, and I do want to remind the board that, uh, Randy and I, and I have been working with DCF to try to, um, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, um, um, DCR to work with, um, uh, increasing our rates. It's a long process, a lo, very slow, long process. Um, we are just waiting back from them to hopefully get a meeting set up. But we've, uh, Randy and I submitted all of the paperwork and everything they've asked for. It was a, uh, quite, quite the amount that they did ask for. But, um, so right now, we're just, uh, waiting for them to kind of get back to us on that in regards to potentially increasing our rates going for next year.
Yep. So, uh, Tyler, when you do, um, get that approval from DCR, um, and Randy knows this because I brought it up when he raised this. But, but please make sure the communication is crystal clear. It's about the schools and the youth hockey program. Um, the schools as soon as possible because their user athletic fees are based on, uh, the current rates. And, um, we just want to be able to give those families a heads up if, uh, costs are going up.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's something, it's, I've been speaking with Danny about it as well, just to keep it on his mind. Like, you know, it's not going to be a huge amount, but just keep it on your radar that it could raise, you know, however much they decide. But I don't foresee it being raised too much, but he does, he is aware that, um, there's potential for an increase next year. So, um, as well as all the groups and youth hockey knows as well.
Okay, perfect. Any questions for our Parks and Recreation Director? All right, Tyler, thank you very ni, uh, very much. Nicely done.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, who's next, Mr. Albert?
So next up is Chief Rafidi to go over the police budget review.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? I have a heater on freezing here. So I hope you're doing well. It, I can't believe it's been a year since we were at the table with operational requests. And I don't envy you guys. You have a lot of, uh, decisions to make and I'm going to hurl a few more at you.
That's all right.
So some of these are going to sound familiar, uh, looking to add another sergeant position. Currently, we have two sergeants that divide their job responsibilities between two roles. One is acting as both, both the prosecutor and the detective sergeant. And the other is two days in the traffic realm of policing and two days in ship patrol. If we could add another sergeant, we'd be able to let them be full-time traffic, which obviously is a huge concern within this town. And the other, um, the other sergeant could be full-time detective sergeant. So, um, again, like the past few years, I've come before you a couple of times seeking the addition of four new patrol positions. We've grown as a town and our mission has expanded in many different directions. We need more personnel on the street and to realize all those goals, uh, that ask is 252,000 approximately. Uh, many of the next few line items, as you can see on the sheet, probably have in front of you, are related to overtime. The most significant being the overtime items related to training and shift replacement. Uh, as you can see from the previous two fiscal years, training overtime line item has historically been underfunded with mandates from post and the anticipated recommendations that I'm guessing are going to come from the audit committee. I've requested an additional $200,000 to that line item. Uh, we're down a number of personnel as we're training new recruits in the academy. Every shift is requiring backfill, so between shift replacement and shift overtime salary, I'm requesting approximately 231,000. Although if the, the new patrol positions are realized, I think that ask would definitely decline. At the holiday line item, as you can see from looking at the, the previous years, this line item is contractual and it's, um, been historically underfunded, so I'm requesting $20,000 there. And if there's nothing with salaries, we're going to move on to expenses. Um, most of this was housekeeping, housekeeping line items where I moved different money from one line to the other. Um, the only really additional request in the expense side of the police budget is $7,200. And that is equipment for personnel, as we're hoping to, to hire three to four officers in this upcoming fiscal year and, um, to, to outfit people for the academy. And then when they graduate, outfit them in the uniform. Um, it, as you can see, again, historically underfunded, and this would help to alleviate that. So that is basically it for the police budget. I can go on to animal control.
Uh, look, just any questions on the police budget for the chief, uh, before we move on? So, um, Chief, real quick, um, if, if you got So um, Chief, real quick, um, if, if you got four new patrol positions, uh if that was approved. Are you um, would you then be operating at your optimum staffing levels? Um, and, and provided a, a new sergeant as well, or um, are you still shorthanded?
Well, right now, well, even if we added the four new patrol positions, um, the, the civil service examiner is, is in March. We, we are down right now, six people and a military, a, a guy that's on military. So we have two in the academy. So then. Just assume that graduates successfully, we're still down four funded positions.
Okay.
The military officer should be back in June, so. With the civil service list coming out, depending on how many people sign up that are interested and then the interview process, we're probably looking at just. You know, kind of maybe January, February, depending on if I can get them into an academy. The four positions that we have, but if we were to get the four new, totally new positions. We're probably looking at next spring to get them into an academy and.
Okay.
And if that answers your question, I think um would be.
It does. All right, any other questions for the chief uh regarding the police budget? Uh, Trish, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so wait, will you just go over, um, so you have six, you're down six?
Yep.
And then we're gonna get, there's two.
So right, we're down of funded positions already. We're down six patrol officers and one officer that's on military leave. So we have two in the academy right now. And I'm very confident they'll graduate. Um. By June, cause they started in January, they'll train. So that leaves us down four positions. So I'm hoping with the. Tests coming out in March, I will be able to get the four traditional, like the, the positions that are already funded. Into the academy over the summer. And then the new four new positions.
Right.
Like, like twenty twenty-six, you know, hopefully January, February, March of twenty twenty-six.
Alright.
On academy. I know, it's confusing.
All right, thank you, Chief. Um, seeing no more questions, let's go to animal control.
So animal control, um, as you can see from the sheet in front of you, there is currently a twenty-five thousand dollar line item for um. A part-time position, which we moved away from a number of years ago, trying to see if we could save money. Um, it is not working out. What I'm trying to do is bring back the part-time position because right now hiring part-time, much like Ed said, without benefits. Um, it's like a revolving door and Stacy is ending up working a lot of overtime. I think. Really, right now, the whole ask for that is ten thousand dollars. And I think if we. Uh, it's, it's hard to anticipate how much that would cut down the overtime line item and the part-time. Um. You know, hourly rate, but I think the ask is ten thousand, but I don't think it will be moving forward. I think it would probably be about five thousand. Cause I think we'd be able to save on the overtime. Yeah. But I, I don't, you know, I would need to see it for a year before we did that. So that, that basically is to give Officer Benton some assistance because she can't be working all the hours she is.
Any questions regarding animal control? All right.
I just, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna, I just wanna uh, one thing, I just wanna throw a, a, a thank you to Officer Benton. Um, I was in the Ponce Street at Cape Cod Lane and there was a um golden doodle in the middle of the Ponce Street. And I pulled over to grab it and um, I had my phone and I called the police. They sent her down and between her and I. Uh, the dog, we got the dog back to where it belongs. So I want to give her a thank you. Cause she came right up, was right there. I went down Plymouth Street, she went down Wall Street. And uh, the two of us met and there he was right there, she was right there. So we grabbed him, found out what house she was in, her, her, her um brother, that boy who came off the school bus and. The dog's name was Sunday, so Sunday was saved on Friday. So I just wanna say thank you.
Stacy's great. We're fortunate to have her.
Yes. Thank you. I just couldn't let that go by. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Thank you, Chief.
Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Albert, who's next?
All right, so next up is conservation. Uh, Reagan Jameson is here. They're just Reagan.
You are Reagan?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. So um for our operations for. Next fiscal year, the, we're asking for um, an increase of five thousand, five hundred dollars. To the consultant line. That is to help us um maintain the ponds. So remember last year at town meeting, um, we, the. Um, there was a town meeting agenda item, a warrant agenda item where seven thousand five hundred was transferred. Uh, from the general fund to the conservation land fund to help us manage the ponds. This year I was um discussing with um. Uh, Charlie and Randy about doing that same thing again this year. And it was felt that having it in operations budget was a better, um, you know. Because these are becoming, maintaining the ponds as part of our properties is something that we need to add into operations. So we're increasing that line item. Um, to be able to bring that total line to seven thousand five hundred. That will cover everything. We're able to supplement how much it costs to manage the ponds with, and you know, anything above and beyond. Um, with the conservation land fund, but this is just to kind of get us an operations budget so we can make sure that those are all maintained. Um, the recommendations for each year are a little different. Um, you know, if we um. You know, needed to do or attack something or something new came up, we could, you know, again, supplement that with the conservation land fund. Um, the other item that we're asking for this year um is an assistant agent. So. Does seem to be a theme this year, staffing. I could see why, you know, with all of the increase over the years of um. How many new, you know, subdivisions are coming in. It does seem like we're, you know, Canton is continuously growing. Um, we, this is the second year I've asked, we've asked for an assistant agent. Um, big reasons are what some other people have mentioned is just success in planning. Um, right now, you know, I'm the technical staff in the department and if I'm not there, there's nobody to answer any questions if I'm on vacation or, you know, medical leave. Um, there was a six-month gap in between me and the agent before where there were two interim agents. Um, you know, and, and it really was a big detriment to the department. You know, we really fell behind with the organization getting permits out. Um. You know, and then when we had a transition with our admin staff, same thing, it was a six-month. Turnover where I was doing a lot of the photocopying, scanning and things like that. So having another person. Um, to be there, to be able to answer technical questions, to help with. Um, site visits and just be able to provide that level of service um to the residents. Um, I've presented the data before that with the, you know, um, eleven communities that you voted to compare. Um, to for human resources reasons, Canton, just when you look at the Wetland Protection Act. Just the state law, not including the fact that we have two local laws that our department also manages. Um, Canton has um issued for Canton one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine um permit numbers. And that's more than double a lot of the other communities, like um Needham is only nine hundred and forty-three, Westwood is seven hundred and sixty-eight. Sharon, six hundred and sixty-five. So we have more than double the work of our surrounding, most of our surrounding communities. The next closest is Walpole at one thousand three hundred and twenty-six. And the lowest is Randolph, which is only issued four hundred and twenty-nine permits. So we do have a significant volume of work. Um, that I can really use some, some help managing and, and being efficient with. Um. So yeah, that's basically an assistant agent and some funds to help manage the ponds.
So uh Reagan, same question uh to you that I asked uh Mr. Walsh. Um, do any towns share um conservage, conservation agent resources? Um, like a part-time that's working in Sharon, but they're looking for small hours. Um, does any of that happen?
You know, the woman who was the A, I think, I think in this area, those days have passed. I don't know, you know, if you guys know, but for the last year and a half, I've been president of the Massachusetts Society of Municipal Conservation Professionals. We recently did a salary survey, um, looking at surrounding towns, looking at staffing. I mean, a lot of departments even have like three and four people. If it's a big community. I mean, if you're looking out on Western Mass, there's some towns that don't have staff or have part-time staff. Um, when, when I came in, the woman that I had replaced, when she was here about ten years ago, she worked for Dedham. And, and Canton. But I think even at that time, based on what hadn't been done when I came in. I think it just was not enough sta- staff time for the level of work that is in Canton. Um, so now Dedham, we had a part-time person ten years ago. Now they have three staff people. You know, technical people that are on staff in Dedham and they only have. Um, they are, Dedham is also the Stormwater Authority, which we are, but they only have ever had six hundred and forty-two. Um, DEP permit issue, issued, whereas we've had one thousand three hundred and fifty-nine. So the fact that they have three technical staff, you know, is, I think we need to be, it's just a lot of work.
Yep, okay. Uh, any questions for our conservation agent? All right, seeing none Reagan, thank you very much.
Thanks Reagan.
All right, next, Mr. Albert.
All right, next up, we have the DPW uh department budgets with Mr. Trotter should be here.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, I just got the phone, Mr. Trotter. He's having some technical difficulties right now.
All right, let's skip to assessors.
Yeah.
And we'll see if he can't resolve that.
Okay.
All right, so. Uh, do we have Ms. Floyd? Uh, she is on mute and no camera. So let's push her and we'll go to who?
The executive office, Mr. Duty, since he's on the screen. Well, look at that. I could push right to the front of the line.
That's how quick it happens, sir.
Get that on purpose. All right, um, I don't have a ton, I think I'm just gonna focus on really the primary request from the executive office. We have some small increases to. Um, some of the expense lines like, you know, paper, printing products, office supplies, things like that. Um, and then we have a couple of uh salary, small salary increases that are contractual. Uh, but I think the, the primary uh request we have this year is for a part-time position. So it's a part-time communication specialist, specialist position. Uh, it's a twenty-hour a week benefited position and this position would be responsible for managing. Both external and internal communications for the town of Canton. As you all know, uh, folks are consuming their information in a variety of ways, not always traditional. Like uh, like the Canton citizen, for example. So a lot of our residents consume information on social media, websites, blogs. All kinds of different electronic formats and frankly, uh, in, in our office. Uh, we just don't have the bandwidth to be able to manage those communications effectively. And I think. I think the goal of a communication specialist for Canton would be to manage communications and make sure citizens. Are getting the information that they need, uh, accurate information on a timely basis. So for example, I think there was discussion earlier about um the town, of the town clerk in particular, being able to let folks know about the April elections. I think that, you know, a communication specialist could be helpful to department heads and communicating information from individual departments. To the public. Um, managing the, the town's website. You know, we get often uh comments from folks that the website is not quite up to date. That information isn't there that they expect to be there. So this person would be, you know, in charge of making sure the, the website was up to date. And of course, there are always traditional press releases that need to be done, um, that we currently hire an outside PR firm to do for us. So, you know, we can reallocate the money that we currently spend for a third party to this twenty-hour position. Uh, and the total cost would be about twenty thousand dollars for that to occur. So that's our, our primary ask this year. Um, and we're hoping that the board considers it as a possibility.
Any questions, Mr. Duty? Yep, Trish?
Um, yeah, so do other towns have communication spec- specialists around us?
Yeah, good, great question. Yeah, there are several communities that uh employ uh communication directors, actually. So it's a full-time position. Um, and of course, the la- the larger cities, mostly, mostly, mostly all larger cities have them. But we're seeing an increase in uh communities the size and type of Canton, um, adding these positions to their, their roles. Just because there's so much information and so many different platforms that need to be managed. With all the other responsibilities that we have as municipal employees, we just can't do it effectively.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Duty?
I just have one more budget for it to, to present to you. It's the insurance budget, but other than that.
Oh yeah, sorry, skipped right over that.
Yeah, that's okay. So um, the only other budget that has any significant change that, you know, you would need to know about is the. Uh, the insurance budget. So, you know, the way the process works here in Canton is we have an insurance broker and. Every year our policies need to be evaluated in renewed, you know, repriced and renewed. So. Currently, the broker is in the process of doing that. And I think what people need to understand is we have a. A, a variety of insurances that we carry, anything from, um, you know, like line of duty, uh, injury insurance to. Insuring the buildings, right, and the property and the vehicles. So we don't have one insurance company that ensures all those things, right? So our broker goes out, tries to find the best price for our insurance needs. And then we put together a package of insurance, usually very different, different companies um that do that. So. Presently, we have a quote for those insurances and it's about a sixty-five thousand dollar increase over last year. That's a worst-case scenario, um, because we don't know the exact figure yet. It could come in less than that, but. The broker feels like this is the, the higher um of the cost. And so that's why we put in um a request. Of insurance for one million, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and nine hundred, one million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. Um, and it's a, about a four percent increase over last year. But I don't know that that's the final number yet, but that's the number we're gonna be going with for now.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right. So. Um, let's go back to assessors uh with Carolyn. Um. And then I think she's gonna present uh from Randy's office, so here she is.
Yeah, sorry.
That's all right.
Difficult difficulties. Um, uh, my ask is for an extra one hundred and forty thousand dollars for the certification of the town. Basically, we were supposed to have one when I started five years ago, but COVID kind of ended that, so we turned the monies back. But um, so instead of a five-year, it's actually gonna be a ten-year. And we have to get into, out of the eight hundred and seventy-seven, eighty-seven, sixty-one parcels. We need to do a cyclical inspection on eighty percent, so seven thousand properties we have to visit. And we, I mean, we need to pick up new pictures and talk to residents if we can get in, if not, you know, get information at the door. But um, for the most part, it's gonna be a lot of work.
Right, that's a good one. Uh, what else?
Um, basically that's it, because we do hire a company that comes out and does that. They do all the commercial. They'll be adding the personal property and um, we'll be, be having the Department of Revenue will be coming out to look at properties. And everything else. So they'll be in-house a lot, doing a lot of questions. And we'll, we still have to do all the permits and everything on the side.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Floyd? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep. Hey, let's see, I see like four Mr. Trotters on my screen. Must have logged in about nine times. Oh, yes, sir. Well, you're on mute.
I am, I'm fine. Now I can't get rid of all of these other things.
You sound like you're at the Red Sox game.
I think I got rid of all those other things.
Yep, you're good, sir.
All right. I was starting to panic. Charlie was panicking. I, I could, I should have kept ducking and just talked Randy into doing this one.
Yeah, that, that's how simple it is, but I don't buy that Charlie was panicking, that, that.
Yeah, that that's how simple it is, but I don't buy that Charlie was panicking, that that, I mean, he doesn't have panic in him.
That is not an emergency in my book, Mr. Chair.
Right.
All right, very good.
Laughs in the face of that. All right, sir, start us off.
All right, Public Works, uh, Public Works budget is three, roughly round figures, 3.3 million. Our request, the base is 3,292,058 dollars. Our request is $9 more than that. Uh, the highlight of the budget is we would like, like the theme you referred all night, we would like to add a mechanics position. We are, we we are short, I believe we are short in that, we should have at least four mechanics, if not five mechanics, working in the garage, for the number of equipment that they have to take care of. And to be able to centrally level fund our budget and still add a position, I was able to move some of the existing payroll out of Public Works and put it into water and sewer. The case, the the base for that was the GIS tech we have. Last fiscal year, she was charged entirely to Public Works, and they should, it should have been charged 60, I mean, 40 for Public Works, 30 for water, 30 for sewer. So I adjusted that payroll. And we also had a heavy equipment operator carried this fiscal year in Public Works for 65,000, that should have been in the water budget. So by moving that payroll out, I was able to um fund an increase in position and still meet the tiger call that was given by FinCom in the Finance Department. So is there any questions on Public Works? So essentially, we agree with what the number FinCom gave us, and we have not asked, we asked him for $9 more.
Please, Mike, I can Venmo you that tonight.
Here you go.
Any questions for Mr. Trotter?
Looks good, Mike.
All right, on the water, um, the water, in my request, as you know, Randy and I kind of share the water budget, the enterprise budgets. Um, Randy takes care of the debt service and I take care of the expenses. Although, when you look at the expenses, there's two line items in the expenses that I really don't control. One is MWRA fees, and the other one is the general fund transfer. Uh, you know, general fund, there's an equation that the enterprise pays back to the general fund or the administrative support that the general fund provides the enterprise accounts. So that is set again by Fin, by the Finance Department. So my request for the water is an $89,235 increase, which is the addition of the GIS tax salary and the heavy equipment operator's salary. And I don't know, Aunt Randy, if you want to talk here about um the bottom line, which would include MWRA, uh, the general fund chargebacks and debt service.
Happy to do so, Mr. Trotter, uh, through the chair. The um water enterprise budget uh is um put forward to be a reduction of 1.2% or $120,000 all in, uh, primarily driven by reductions in debt service due to the debt amortizing that that reduced it by 110,000. Uh, all the other changes uh offset and reduce it by another 10,000.
Any questions on the?
Go ahead. For Mr. Trotter or Mr. Scollins regarding that? All right, I see none.
All right, on the suicide, um, it's the same thing. I control expenses except for the water, the um MWRA charge, the general fund chargebacks and debt service. So on the suicide of the enterprise funds, my request is $21,830 increase, which reflects the GIS tax salary addition to the sewer enterprise fund, and then the impacts of MWRA, the chargebacks, and the debt service. If, Randy, you wanna walk through that?
Sure, so um same situation with debt service in the sewer enterprise, um, reducing uh from this year 77,000. Uh, and uh MWRA assessment, assessment projected to be up um 103,000. Um, but net-net across uh all of the lines within sewer enterprise uh expenses up, or the total cost of the budget up, uh, 0.1% or $8,300. Good. Any questions for Mr. Trotter or Mr. Scollins regarding that? On the sewer side? All right, seeing none? Is that all you have, Mr. Trotter?
That's it, Public Works and the enterprise funds.
All right, so uh before I let you go, Mr. Trotter, um, you sent an email to the Select Board uh earlier this afternoon uh discussing the snow and ice fund. Is that something you need us to act on tonight?
I would, I would say yes, if you could. It's just an authorization for us to overspend the allocation that was voted at town meeting, if in fact we need to do that.
So, uh, Mr. Scollins, can you just, um, do we need to set an amount, or I I'm just trying to think how we need to word this motion?
Sure, it's um, this is a requirement um in the state's finance laws, and it's very common that if the um DPW director determines that the snow and ice budget is likely going to be overspent, doesn't mean it's going to be overspent, but if it's likely to be overspent, um, he just needs to advise um the Select Board, the administration of that um possibility, um, so that, and receive authorization to do so. Um, I looked at the account today and removing encumbrances, which, you know, there are big encumbrances there for more salt, salt buy-ins, et cetera. But based on actual expense through today, um, there's still $175,000 left in the budget. Of course, a couple storms, a couple, two, three storms, you know, and and it could eat that up, or another big salt buy-in. But the, one of the primary reasons to have the reserve fund that's controlled by FinCom is to um uh address any deficits in in the snow and ice budgets, and and that reserve fund is 600,000 um to cover not only the snow and ice deficits if they happen, but any other departmental deficit. So uh I'm not concerned about uh any overage that may or may not occur here.
Okay. So a simple motion to authorize uh Mr. Trotter to um dip into the snow and ice fund or to exceed uh the current authorization? Okay. All right, so uh we're gonna take this as a topic, uh, not anticipated by the chair within uh 48 hours, otherwise this would have been posted. Uh, but with the storm this uh past weekend, um, Mr. Trotter looked at this and he sent the Select Board a letter that we all should have received, so um, Mr. Albert, are you clear on a a motion for this?
Yeah, I think so, so let me know how this sounds, um. I I I move that we make a, I move that we make a motion to allow uh DPW, we authorize the DPW to overspend through the ice and snow um account. How's that sound?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, roll call vote, Mr. McCourt?
Aye.
Ms. Boydin?
Aye.
Mr. Albert?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
And the chair as well, 5-0, you have your authorization, Mr. Trotter.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, one question just to to Mr. Superintendent. Do we have enough uh salt, Mr. uh Superintendent?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, because about 10 years ago, we ran out of salt, but you were right on top of it, I knew you would be, thank you.
All right.
So, uh, Mr. Trotter, if I could just take this opportunity, as a uh, as an individual who drives uh all over the place through various towns, uh, your crew did a fantastic job uh with a very difficult storm uh this past weekend, and and the roads look fantastic.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
All right, good night.
Good night, have a good night, sir.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. Does that take care of our budgets?
The budgets are done, yeah.
All right, let's start to, let's start to move here.
All right. So this next one here, Mike, um, it's the Select Board to vote positions on annual town meeting articles.
Right, so.
No motion, though.
Yeah, if you look at the packet, um, they they have these specific um articles in there. And then Charlie, I don't know, um, if you wanna guide us on what the um, what the process is that we're supposed to do, uh, is it just? Um, can we group these into certain ones, or?
Yeah, you know, many of them are, you know, procedural in the beginning. Um, you should have got kind of a summary of the articles. Uh, you had some highlights in there of ones you probably wanna discuss, you got, do you have that, that document? Okay. I I would, I would use that as your guide.
Okay.
Um, anything they see highlighted would be, we call your attention to something that you wanna take a position on.
Okay. All right, so um if we look at the uh Select Board positions on article, uh, that sheet that was in our packet, that's kind of what we'll be uh going off of. Everybody have it, that's the one that's uh got the highlighted yellow?
Yeah.
So you can group one through four as your first?
Yeah, yeah, so uh Mr. Albert, that that's probably what we'll be looking.
Unfortunately, uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have that right in front of me, um.
Okay, that's fine, um, so I I'll ask for the motion, uh, and somebody can just say so moved. Um, so uh, I would entertain a motion that Articles 1 through 4, uh, the Select Board unanimously supports these articles, these are housekeeping uh and typically supported by the board.
They're moved.
They're moved.
Do I have a motion, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, uh, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, 5-0. Next, I would entertain a motion uh that the Select Board indefinitely postpone, that the Select Board um supports indefinitely postponing Article 5 and 6. Uh, these are personal service contracts and collective bargaining agreements under the Select Board, and we typically uh would indefinitely postpone these if we don't have them.
So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, 5-0. Uh, next, I would entertain a motion that we support uh Articles 7, 8, and 9. These are paying the bills for the prior fiscal year, adjusting the fiscal 24 accounts and authorizing certain revolving funds, and the uh Select Board typically supports these articles.
They're moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, 5-0. Um, I would entertain a motion uh that the Select Board uh supports indefinitely postponing Article 10 and 11. Uh, Article 10 is related to insurance proceeds, and Article 11 is to accept the general or session laws enacted by the General Court.
They're moved.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded, uh, Mr. Duty, before we take a a vote, yes, sir?
Yep, just a quick update on the uh accepted general or session laws enacted by the General Court. Nothing right now to accept, but as an update, the uh Municipal Empowerment Act is being debated at this point, and it's expected that there'll be a decision on that by March 31st. So there may be some uh, some laws enacted by the General Court to accept um by the time town meeting comes, but not right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, 5-0. Um, Article 12, um, this is the article that uh we match Chi- Chapter 90 funds, um, which allows us to accelerate paving programs and securing contractors earlier than other communities. Uh, this amount would be drastically reduced uh by 640,000 should the pickleball article pass. So uh typically, we match these funds uh and the Select Board supports that. Um, however, the Select Board does have an article uh for town meeting to build the pickleball courts, and there's simply not enough money uh to do both. So if uh the pickleball court passes, that would greatly reduce um the Chapter 90, 90 match. So uh Randy, did you wanna talk about that at all, or did I adequately cover it?
You you nailed it, uh, Mr. Chair, that's exactly correct.
So, uh, Mr. Duty?
And just one bit of information, my understanding is the governor did increase uh her allotment of Chapter 90 funds to municipalities, so we may see uh an increase, we just don't know what it is yet.
I I did see that, I'm not anticipating it to be in the neighborhood of 640,000, but maybe, maybe in the area of $9 that Mr. Trotter was looking for.
We got our nine bucks back.
Yeah. All right, um, so wh- what is the the will of the board here? Um, regarding this particular article?
Mr. Chair, one question on that, being it is an article, what if this article is pulled before the pickleball?
Uh, so Randy, is that a, is that a possibility for this one?
Um, we can, uh, with the procedures that the moderator um uses, uh, we can actually link this article to the pickleball article, so that uh if one gets pulled, the other gets pulled, and they're done in the sequence, um, that would be more rational, meaning pickleball question comes first, and then a Chapter 90 supplement comes second.
We can marry him.
Yep.
Marry him, yeah.
Ms. Boydin?
Yeah, so let's do it as typically supporting it, knowing that they'll be aligned with one another. And that we might lose money on the um 90 money, Chapter 90 money.
Yeah, if they vote for the pickleball money, the pickleball courts, they vote for it, and if they don't, then the money goes to the Chapter 90.
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
So people don't understand what what they, what the consequences are.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Yep, yep.
Well, that's the, that's the whole gist of this conversation, is that Chapter 90, which is road improvements over the pickleball court twice first, uh, just so everybody knows what we're talking about, uh, for Chapter 90 money.
Yep. All right, so I would entertain a motion that the Select Board uh support Article 12. Um, yeah, it's currently written, and then, and then, um, I don't, I don't know that I need a motion, Charlie or Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know that I need a motion to tie this to the pickleball article, that that's really an offline, talk to the moderator when we're setting up for town meeting, plus those two articles together.
That's correct, that'll be the moderator's call.
Yep, yep, okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion that uh the Select Board supports Article 12.
They're moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 My screen moved. My screen moved around, so now the order I call on you might be a little bit different, but. Um, all right, so roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
And the chair as well, five zero. All right, um, I make a motion, uh, that the select board defers article thirteen, uh, to town meeting. This is the, uh, capital outlay program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, roll call vote, uh, we'll go backwards now. Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. Um, I would entertain a motion that, uh, the select board unanimously supports article fourteen. Uh, this is the funding, uh, for the annual Fourth of July community celebration. The amount is fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. So moved.
Motion has been made?
Uh, just, just note on this, Mr. Chair, this is also to support the summer concert series along with the, uh, Fourth of July. As we all know, the concert series in front of the high school has been, uh, getting bigger and bigger, and the recreation has been trying to keep ahead of it, but this is a combined, uh, request.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. So, uh, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. Uh, I would entertain a motion that the select board, uh, defers article fifteen to town meeting, uh, unless there are projects that we are supporting. So this is the Community Preservation Committee, so we would be deferring, uh, to town meeting to let them weigh in on the community preservation. Uh, I don't believe that the select board, I know that we have, um, supported a few projects, but I don't know that we have, uh, any specific, uh, projects that were, um, you know, kind of funding or, uh, leading.
Um, Mr. Chair, one note, one of the, uh, requests for the CPC money is for the library, uh, renovation, part of the historical renovation of the interior, so I wholeheartedly support that. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other comments? All right, so, um, J R, how do you want to word that, that we would defer everything other than the library?
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to personally note that the, uh, library had requested, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, uh, in, to that in front of them, and I just want to support it because it is part of the library renovations that are constantly ongoing at the moment. So that, I'd keep it as it is, though. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, perhaps at town meeting, we can stand and, uh, support that particular portion of it. All right, so, uh, a motion, uh, to defer article fifteen to town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Randy left again, and it changed my whole order again. So roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. Uh, next, I would entertain, uh, uh, sorry, I'm just reading it as I go. Uh, I would entertain a motion that the select board, uh, supports article sixteen. Uh, this is the school committee's request for additional funding for the special education reserve account as it will help to offset unexpected costs for special education needs. Uh, we typically support the school committee's request for this funding. Uh, the schools have asked for six, one point six million dollars, uh, and they, at the special town meeting, and they were successful. Um, it appears the schools will be asking for their traditional request of one million and not one point six million at this current town meeting. So, uh, I would entertain a motion that we support article sixteen in the school committee's request for this funding.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert? Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. All right, next, I would entertain a motion that the select board supports, uh, article seventeen. Uh, this is the additional funding of the capital stabilization account as it provides the town with the opportunity to set aside funds for specific capital uses. Uh, this is an annual article in which a million dollars is authorized to be added to the, um, capital, uh, capital stabilization account. Uh, the funds are used to pay the debt service on short-term borrowing in the early years of the Galvin Middle School project. So I would look for a motion to support article seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. How many articles are there? Yes. All right, um, I would, uh, entertain a motion that the select board, uh, support article eighteen. Article eighteen is a supplemental appropriation for the Bylaw Modernization Study Committee. Uh, that committee is asking for an additional appropriation in order to keep the possibility open of retaining a consultant to assist the committee in obtaining their goal of modernizing the bylaws. So, uh, as the select board representative, uh, to that committee, um, it's a ton of work, uh, that, that we're undertaking. We want to make sure that we get it right, and, um, it, it's simply left to the professionals, and hiring a consultant that has done this and can help advise us, uh, is something I think that we should support. So I would entertain a motion that the select board support article eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. Next, I would entertain a motion, uh, that the select board support article nineteen. This is the appropriation for the pickleball court. Um, this is a request for the appropriation for funding to construct the pickleball court in Canton. This is a free cash item, uh, as we just discussed, uh, earlier. If this is passed, funding will need to be reduced in another area such as the chapter ninety supplement. Uh, mitigation would be an option to fund, um, if this doesn't pass, but we'll cross that bridge, uh, when we get there. Let's see if it passes. So I'll entertain a motion to support article nineteen.
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There you go.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. Uh, next, I would entertain a motion to support article twenty. This is, uh, an appropriation for the master plan update. Uh, the Master Plan Implementation Committee is seeking additional funding for a five-year update to the master plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well. Stral, but I'm not sure that you didn't have this document, and you just didn't want to have to do all this.
I honestly, I dropped the ball, and I apologize.
No, no, no.
This wasn't on purpose at all. I, I didn't pay attention to what it said next to it when I was printing this out.
It's, it's all good. We're, we're flying through. All right, um.
I feel for you.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, next, I would entertain a motion to support article twenty-one. This is a Board of Assessors article to designate Thirty Dan Road as a forty-three D priority development site. Uh, this is a commercial building that has had a significant addition and is currently a shell. The developer is trying to attract companies in the bioscience pharma sector in attempt to create a biosciences corridor and add to current bioscience companies like Organogenesis. So I, uh, would entertain a motion that we support article twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. All right, uh, CASA is requesting to formally add the Director of the Department of Elder and Human Services, uh, to its composition. Uh, a representative from, uh, Department of Elder and Human Services has always been represented on the CASA board, but as a non-voting member, um, this would be to allow that, um, role to be an official voting member. So I would entertain a motion that we support article twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
And the, uh, chair as well, five zero. All right, article, uh, twenty-three is a Board of Assessors article to accept the statute which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted to veterans under certain circumstances. Uh, so I would entertain a motion that the select board supports article twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. Article twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six are street acceptance articles presented by the planning board. Engineering department has been involved in the process of inspecting and reviewing the roads, and the town engineer noted that the roads meet the town's specifications and are all set to be accepted. Uh, this is different than the saddleback lane, uh, discussion last year, as that development was done under forty-B and did not meet, uh, subdivision regulations, but these do. So article twenty-four is, uh, to accept Stillwater Road. Article twenty-five is to accept Dalebrook Court. And article twenty-six is to ex- accept Foundry Way, all, all those public ways. So I would entertain a motion that the select board support article twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motions have been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
And the chair as well. Article twenty-seven is a citizen petition article asking the town if the town would like to see local election day moved to November. This is also a ballot question at the local elections, so I'm not sure if the petitions will be going forward with this as a town meeting article in addition to that. So I would entertain a motion that the select board, um, defers article twenty-seven to town meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
And the chair as well, five zero. Articles, uh, twenty-eight, uh, through thirty-five are zoning articles, uh, and we typically defer those to the planning board, so I would entertain a motion that the select board, uh, would defer article twenty-eight through thirty-five to the planning board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will do a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. And then article, uh, thirty-seven is to appropriate funds to meet expenses for next fiscal year. Uh, so I would entertain a motion that the select board support article thirty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Five zero. All right, those are our positions on the annual town meeting. Next, Mr. Albert.
All right, next up is, um, permission to issue a notice of violation on Pleasant Street. Uh, Mr. Duty, you gonna speak of this?
Yep, I will speak to this. Um, so we are looking to issue a notice of violation to the owner of what is known as Zero R Pleasant Street. And this is essentially the land or the property that surrounds the Herman Paul Road neighborhood. So we've been, uh, they have a retention, uh, basin, um, on that property that, um, the fence was not, uh, installed, so it's a safety issue. We're just concerned, um, that that's an open, you know, kind of pit area that needs to be secured. We've been unable to contact the owner, so I have to, uh, or the board has to grant me the authority to, uh, send a written notice and then post at the property. And then if there's no response, then, you know, we make a decision on whether or not the town is gonna go in and make that safe, um, and then send a bill to the owner.
Okay.
So I'm looking for, looking for your, uh, authorization to send the notice of violation to Zero R Pleasant Street.
All right, Mr. Stral?
Yep, I move that the board give, um, um, the town administrator the permission to issue a notice of violation to O R Pleasant Street.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
And chair as well, five zero.
All right, next up, I move that the board approve the Integrated International Association of Firefighters Local Fifteen Eighty Union Contract.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Contract is in our packet, but we've discussed it already in executive session. Um, hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero. Next, Mr. Albert.
Next, I move that the board appoint the, uh, Board of Health Representative to CASA, Meg Goldstein.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
Next, I move that the board appoint the heavy equipment operator, Joseph Liam Bruno.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
And chair as well, five zero.
I'm gonna jump around a little bit, Mr. Chairman. I got another appointee. I move that the board appoint Parks and Recreation seasonal counselor, Sarah Hoban.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
Next, I move that the board approve the request to hold the Canton Association of Business and Industry 5K slash 10K Road Race to be held on Sunday, September 28, 2025, beginning at 10:00 AM at Trillium Brewery Company at 100 Royal Street, subject to police approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
Next up, I move that the board approve the request to hold the Anthony Maffey Memorial Walk to be held on Saturday, June 7, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, subject to police approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
Next, I move that the board approve the request to hold the annual, 23rd Annual Dina Slus Elementary Fund Run and 5K Race May 18, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, subject to police approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, that's a race I could do. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
Next, I move that the board approve the Southeast Regional Services Group Surge DPW Services Awards from 3-1, 2025, to 2-8, 2026.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, so just so the public is aware, this is an annual contract award that TPW does with Southeastern Regional Services Group awarding them the contract, and we have to approve it. All right, motion has been made and seconded. Yep.
It should be 2-28.
2-28, no. Yep, friendly amendment, 3-1, 2025, to 2-28, 2026. Thank you.
All right.
Yes.
All right, motion has been made and seconded, friendly motion, friendly amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
Next, I move that the board accept the firefighter equipment grant in the amount of $17,506.77.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
Next, I move that the board authorize the use of mitigation funds in the amount of $2,394.04 for the completion of the Serenity Garden Project.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
Next, I move that the board authorize the use of mitigation in the amount of $5,000 for the dog park key fob system.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Duty, did you have a question?
I have a request, actually. I'd like to increase that amount to $7,000. So the
For the key fob?
Yeah, so the code we got for the key fob equipment is $5,000, but we, you know, there was no, nothing built in for any, you know, overage on that project, and we do have to do some fabrication to the gates so it accepts the equipment. So I'm just concerned that I don't want to come back again and ask you for another couple of thousand bucks. So if you can make it 7,000, then whatever we don't use, we'll just, you know, return the mitigation.
Okay, so we'll take that as a friendly amendment. So we will be authorizing up to $7,000 for the dog park key fob system.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Duty, is the town getting any of that money back? Like, I know that we would be charging people for the key fobs. Is that revenue then coming back to the town?
Um, so that revenue ideally would be used by the Friends of the Cat and Dog Park to manage the property. If they had to replace some of the equipment that was gonna be installed or do some work to the interior inside the fencing area, then they would use those funds to do that, as opposed to town, you know, funding those types of maintenance activities.
Okay.
Well, the town will be funded anyhow if it's mitigated with mitigation, correct? It's one way or the other.
Well, you know, they are town-owned parks, so yes, we do have skin in the game, no question.
Yeah, and that's what I, I have no problem. Because he can't have a, he can't have a Charlie for the dogs.
Excuse me, Mr. Charlie, is that, is that just for the equipment, not the fobs? Or the fobs, how many fobs are they getting with it?
No, that's for everything, that's for everything, JR. They're gonna start, they're gonna start initially with 100 fobs.
100, okay, thank you.
And we know, we know, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we know who they are, who's gonna be responsible. If they lose them, do they, what happens?
Yeah, so anyone who has issued a fob will be, you know, catalogued into whatever system the Friends are gonna use to uh, keep an inventory of who has the fobs. And so if someone loses a fob, they'll have to reapply and pay for a new one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so motion has been amended, made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
And the chair as well, five zero. Charlie, screw you guys all up again.
Keep moving around, huh? Next, I move that the board approve the cemetery commitments in the amount of $2,925.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
And the chair as well.
Next, I move that the board approve the cemetery law perpetual care deeds.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.
Ms. Boydin?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Chair as well, five zero.
Next, I move that the board approve the transfer of the cemetery law perpetual care deed.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, roll call vote, Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. McCourt?
Yes.